Good evening, this is the planning board meeting of August 6, 2024. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes from the 7:16:24 meeting.
I'll second that.
They're moved in second, we accept the minutes from 7:16. Any further discussion? There are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And unanimous of four.
Yeah, excuse me, I was not here for the full meeting, so I probably...
You can vote on it, it doesn't matter. It's procedural. That doesn't matter. It's a ministerial act.
Okay, you want to do the 81P?
Yep, you've got the Mylar down there. We finally got the check and the actual signed applications. 66 and 68 Whitewood Road. It is endorseable as submitted. It's a parcel swap to adjoining properties. The area, triangular area up near Whitewood goes to the parcel to the west. The other one goes to the parcel to the east.
Does this say land court?
No.
And we have to all sign it?
Well, I can't sign it.
Can't sign it.
I don't sign them anymore.
Or he doesn't sign them anymore.
Oh, no? Okay.
Because they won't accept the signature.
At the registry.
At the registry. That's we...
Yeah, when you sign the form and send it back in, I'm not on it. So we recommend endorsement as submitted.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, we approve the 81P.
I'll second.
Moved in second, we approved the 81P. Sign it. Any further discussion? There are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous of five.
Well, I think you passed 702.
Yeah.
You can sign the Mylar after the meeting if you want. Whatever.
Okay, we're going to read...
This is the continued public hearing on the application of Route 85 Realty Corp. for special permit approval regarding construction of a 191,700 square foot wholesale facility and associated off-street parking on 116 acre undeveloped property located on the westerly side of East Main Street and southwest of Wildwood Drive, known and numbered as Zero East Main Street, Assessors Map 30, Block 0, Lot 34, in a BP zoning district. Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Good evening. For the applicant, Joseph Antonellis, thank you for the rescheduling of this meeting so that I could be here in person. We've obviously been in front of the board on multiple occasions to discuss the underlying use as a wholesaling facility with storage, which is, requires a special permit in the business park zone in Milford. And I believe that we have successfully addressed all of the issues regarding the site plan aspects, which would be primarily the engineering aspects relative to drainage, et cetera. Additionally, I believe that our traffic study has been reviewed and approved by the peer review consultant. We recognize that there may be questions in the future regarding the traffic patents that might be generated from this particular use. We know at this point, and continue to, or we don't know at this point, and continue to lack information as to whether or not, who, rather, excuse me, as to who the tenant might be. But we certainly recognize that there is a distinction in the zoning bylaw between wholesaling with storage and warehousing, and that warehousing is not allowed in the BP zone, that wholesaling with storage is. I know that the board had concerns regarding the configuration of the building because, quote, "it looks like a warehouse," end quote. And it does. I don't think anybody can deny that. But functionally, the purpose of either a wholesaling facility or warehouse is storage and distribution. The distinction is, is that a wholesaling facility cannot be used for delivery of the stored goods directly to consumers, whereas a warehouse can. And so I know that the board had concerns about the fact that the building shows primarily loading docks that would service large trucks, tractor-trailer trucks. But I actually think that works in the favor of the applicant, because the fact that there are going to be primarily large delivery trucks means that there are not going to be small panel trucks, which might have the ability to distribute goods directly to consumers in homes. And I recognize further that the board, in its development of the zoning bylaw and the master plan, had concerns over the issues that had occurred in Milford relative to the queuing of vehicles that were making deliveries from a last-mile facility. And this is certainly not intended to be a last-mile facility. The marketing of this building will be to attract a tenant who is distributing goods most likely to retail companies and/or to someone processing goods that is using them in a manufacturing sense. I set forth that information on a letter that I provided to the board about a month ago, and I copied it to town council. And to the best of my knowledge, I don't believe that town council has found any error in my analysis as to the distinction between a warehouse and a wholesaling facility. With that in the background, I've made some suggestions to your staff, to Larry, regarding conditions that might be appropriate for a special permit. And I believe that Larry has generated a draft decision, which I have reviewed and can tell the board that I find the conditions to be appropriate for this particular use. Now, those conditions would require the identification of the tenant and the certification from the tenant as to what their business plan is, so that basically you would know when someone goes in there as to what they're doing. So again, if a tenant were to come in who was going, who is known to be a company that distributes directly to consumers, that will be something that will be evident to the board, the building inspector, who is your zoning enforcement agent. And further, if there's someone that you have concerns about, we're going to have to provide you with certification relative to the traffic patents not being changed from what was presented to your board by our traffic consultant, reviewed by your peer review consultant, and functionally approved. So I think that the manner in which the special permit decision has been constructed is significantly in favor of enforcing the bylaw by the terms and provisions of the special permit. Additionally, that special permit will run to the applicant, meaning that anyone that uses the building has to come in through the applicant. Now, should my client wish to sell the building, we will obviously have to come to the board and identify the fact that the applicant is being substituted. But again, that doesn't change the underlying aspect of the use. The use is going to always have to be wholesaling. And I can tell you that there are people interested in the building who fit within that criteria. Again, we've recognized from the beginning, the town's bylaw designed to prohibit what we've all dealt with in Milford, which is the congestion on our roads and ways that are primarily a result of a last-mile facility. This is not and cannot be that. In addition, we have designated a 10-acre parcel, it's 9.875 acres, I believe, because your bylaw says that when you look at the business park zone and the particular part of it that is titled to my client, we can only use 10 acres. And so I suggested to Larry that there be a provision in the special permit that prohibits any further wholesaling on the remaining portion of the property because we've used up our 10 acres. That is, we did it by way of an 81X plan, because what we plan on doing is having a leased, that would be a leased area. Again, the lease will have to come in, come back, and be approved so that you, your board, knows that the area that is designated for wholesaling is limited to the 9.8 acres that we show on the 81X plan. And I further suggested to Larry that as the special permit's decision is recorded, which is required, that we can most likely attach a plan to it that would identify the area within the overall parcel as being limited to the wholesaling use. I didn't want to take up all of the board's time, I know you have other people on the agenda, but I did want to try and get to the heart of the matter, which again, I believe is, was related to identifying a tenant, which we can't do. And as I've explained to the board, and I speak to this from experience in four other communities, for other clients other than the one that I represent tonight, where I've had to say the same thing. I can't tell you who the tenant is, because we can't find a tenant till we know when we can build the building. The market is such that you're not going to attract a tenant when you can't tell them when the building will be occupied. That's the catch-22 here. There's nothing we can do about it. And again, in searching your bylaw, and I think I have a fairly good handle on it, I've been familiar with it for a long time, there is no requirement in the bylaw that any applicant identify a tenant by name. Certainly, we have to identify and limit the special permit to the use of wholesaling with storage. So with that, I'll stop. And we're here, the whole team is here to answer any questions, including questions that Liz might have relative to the site. But again, I think we've addressed most of those, if I'm not mistaken. And again, I thank the board for cooperation, I thank Larry for his cooperation, putting up with me on through all of this. But again, I think that we're getting to the point where we could probably, I'm hoping we can close the public hearing. With that, now I really will stop. Thank you.
Liz, you are comfortable with the site?
So my, the only two things that, comments I guess I have are, one, my preference would have been to see this as a, as a private subdivision room, just so that it would have been, which I think it meets all of the criteria anyway, but that just, from, you look at it, it's clearly a road, and I would prefer to see it constructed like a road, similar to what we did for Wendy's, behind Wendy's to the storage, as opposed to something like Quarry Drive, which gets used as a road but doesn't meet any of the requirements. So that, it's not something that I, like I said, I'm pretty certain this meets all the criteria anyway, but it's something that came up as they started...
Designing that way, right?
With the 81X. I thought it was going to be a subdivision room, but then they went with the 81X. And then the other thing is up on... up on this north corner, it's a, it's a proposed three-to-one slope, which is, which is not excessive. It's a pretty standard slope, but it is, I was going to say 15, 20 feet high, something like that. And so I've seen issues with slopes like that, especially fill slopes. So on that particular one, there's other three-to-one slopes, but they're much less high. I would like to see a geotech at least oversee the construction and be able to sign off on it, saying that it was properly constructed. I don't know if you want to go as far as requiring a design or if you would retain well, but those are my only two comments.
Do they provide any detail?
Of this?
Yeah, is that just a fill slope, or is...
It's just a fill slope.
Yeah, it's a fill slope, it's 20 or so feet high, it is a three-to-one slope, so we feel pretty comfortable with that. We have had a geotech involved early on with the materials on site, they're good materials. So we wouldn't have an issue with having a geotech after kind of certify it was built appropriately and stabilized.
You could put geomembrane on the slope and fill back on that side, that should stabilize it at the least, if we think that that's going to be an issue. I mean, that isn't that, that isn't that big a deal. I mean, once they get to the rough slope, they can just lay down the fabric and then put the top material down and just stabilize it that way, which may not be a bad idea anyways, because even, even though somebody may say it was done correctly, if you don't stabilize it, and we get rain and stuff, it's going to wash out, no matter what you do. So at least if you have fabric, if you have geomembrane on it.
You would put that erosion matting on top, you know, that's what you're referring to, the grass will grow through it, but it holds everything down. Yeah, we don't, we don't have an issue with that whatsoever.
Would that be, if we put that out in the plan, would that be covered?
Yeah, they should show a detail just on that slope with the geomembrane on top of it, just showing it. I mean, I don't think it's that big a deal one way or another. They probably, they probably should, we probably should show it, because I think we're, we probably should have it as a height thing, if slope's greater than, you know, more than 10 feet difference to use it. I mean, as we said, we don't need them if it's five feet high. In some, certain areas, you've got a three-to-one slope, I'm not saying to use it there, but obviously we, we have 20, we have to show where that is on the plan somehow. I don't know if it's...
Yeah, I don't have an issue if we specify on any slopes greater than 10 feet, we'd need to have that, you know, the maverick on there, the jute meshing. It just holds everything in place, grass grows through it.
And the geotech to supervise it?
Yeah, we can have a geotech write a sign-off on it. Like I said, I feel very comfortable we can do it properly. It's nothing at all wrong with wanting to make sure of that. We've all seen things that should be done right, don't end up being done right. But I feel comfortable we can get that done and give the board the comfort level by adding that provision in there.
Chair, you two said different things. You said supervise, and the gentleman said sign off.
He's not going to sign off unless he sees it.
Exactly. Okay, all right. Fair enough.
What I would say is something to the fact of, you know, walking with a permit or a geotech signs off on the construction of the store, something like that.
Yeah, we can work that out, that's not an issue.
I think so.
So that needs to be a condition added to the decision.
Yeah. Any other members of the board get...
I mean, I understand what, you know, the issue of not knowing, I mean, I still have issues with it. I mean, the one thing that, obviously, they're going to have to, when they finally know somebody, they're going to have to come back and provide forms and stuff like that, just so it's upfront now, because we've had this with other people, oh, we couldn't do this, and can we come back and change it, and can we change zoning? This one person on this board will not be entertaining anything like that. If this, if this gets built on spec and we can't find a warehousing, and someone comes back to say...
Wholesaling.
Wholesaling. There's one person on this board, I could tell you right now, that will not be in favor of that. And if somebody wants to build this on spec and they can't find something, good luck, because I'll be the first one getting up at town meeting saying that, you know, we're getting it shoved down our throat, we shouldn't do it. I guess I'm not doing it as an 81X, because I haven't done 81Xes previously, I mean, is that just showing lease?
So it, the best way to describe it is, is I thought of the possibility of creating a condominium plan and having unit spots there, and it gets very complicated in doing that. So we decided that what we do is we do an 81X plan, which shows the entire perimeter, which is essential because of the 10-acre requirement. And then within that perimeter plan, which is certified to the boundaries, we would show a certified leasehold area that is less than or 10 acres. And so that's why we chose the vehicle, to use that vehicle. And again, with the, as you know, the decision will be recorded while it runs with the applicant, it will affect the land. So it runs with the applicant, but it does affect the land. There will be a provision in that special permit that the remaining part on that plan cannot be used for wholesaling purposes, because that would be in violation of your zoning bylaw. And so that's why we chose that way. We chose not to go with the subdivision plan, because we're not ready to get there yet, we don't have any other concepts for what's going to happen there. And to Liz's point about the roadway, and John can answer this better, because I'm not an engineer, I believe when we started, we designed the roadway to subdivision standards. And I believe that there is a condition in the special permit that requires it to be built according to the plans. Okay? So I do think, Liz, that your concern is somewhat carried by the manner in which Larry encapsulated that in the proposed decision.
It's been covered several times.
Well, and again, you know, I'm, this is obviously, you know I've been here before.
Right.
And I think you know that I always encourage my clients to comply with the terms and provisions of the decision. So when you're involved in helping write the decision, it's, the client will yell at me first. And I haven't had that yet, so, so far, that's been okay. The one thing that I would just like to point out, if I can, I have no problem submitting a lease, so that you know who the tenant is. But when we do that, I would like the opportunity to submit a redacted lease, so that the financial terms of that lease are not disclosed to the public. I don't believe that that's necessary. So I just wanted to, I meant to mention that when Larry put in the lease there, and I forgot, but for the record, I'd like to state that I have no problem with the lease, but I do believe financial terms should be redacted. Most tenants are not going to want that published.
I have no, I have no issue with that, you know, other than any terms and conditions what the leaseholder is responsible for or not, I want to know what it is.
Absolutely.
What the laws are, I don't care.
No, no, you're correct about that, because there might be provisions about stormwater management, et cetera. So yes, I have no problem with the terms and provisions.
Yeah, I think the device of an 81X versus a subdivision for, that creates lots and parcels, or an 81P plan that only creates parcels, is that it's only a witness plan. It's, you know, it's a sketch that shows what the lease is talking about, so you can identify on the property in relation to the rest of the property and the roadway where this lease applies. It doesn't do anything, it doesn't create any divisions in the land at all. It is, so for, from a subdivision and 81P standpoint, it doesn't properly exist, but it's a reference, it's like a sketch. So the official status of the 81X plan is almost non-existent compared to what an 81P would do, or what a subdivision would do in creating lots. But you need it so you can tell where what you're talking about is located. So that's all it does.
And I mean, that is a detriment to us, because we don't get any zoning freezes from that plan. So the 81X does not freeze any zoning. So someone could go out tomorrow and rezone the rest of that property, and we don't have any protection. By subdivision plan, as you know, would get us protection for eight years from the date of endorsement, and no one could ever change the zoning. So we considered that in our analysis, but we felt comfortable that the town is comfortable with the business park zone and didn't worry about that. And again, we don't know what the rest of the property is going to be used for, so we felt that was the best way to go.
Is the roadway going to be in its own, like easement and access, and I think Larry might have mentioned...
There was an easement shown on the plan. Yeah, it identified the roadway as an access utility easement. And again, to answer your earlier question, the road was definitely designed to handle the traffic class, though it was a road.
I was looking at some of the curves, and I was like, wow, this is...
Yeah, yeah, it was designed that way, we didn't want to be short-sighted. And to answer your earlier question, I just double-checked, we do show that the detail of erosion blankets, it is on the plan. We typically, yeah, we typically specify it for a two-to-one slope, but understanding the concern, we don't mind a condition to say for the three-to-one, you know, greater than 10 feet, we'll use it. But the detail is already on the plan.
I guess I just have, one, this is more, I guess, the way the business park zone is written, does defining 10 acres approximately out of this whole parcel meet the intent of the business park zone, 10 acres or less possible? Because I don't know the answer to that. I'm not saying that it's more of a technical question. I'm sure applicant feels that it does. I guess I, I'm not, I'm not sure that it does or doesn't. The only other thing that I had is that if that is designed to town requirements, I would, the one other thing that I would suggest that we do is that during construction, that you go out and inspect the roadway so that that way, depending, because one of the issues that we had with Quarry Square, and one of the reasons why we would never take it over is, FAFD built it, no one ever saw it, no one has any idea what the hell's out there, and we weren't going to take it over, depending on what happens in the future, at least we know what's out there.
Joe, in response to your concern about the intent of the 10 acres, as you know, we could come in, you could create an industrial park with no lot lines, as you know, we could put roadways in and have pat sites, so to speak. I felt coming in that the best way to define the 10 acres within an industrial park, because this is what it might be, depending on where we go, is to have something that you could rely on. And again, with the special permit, the finding that I suggested, and the condition that no further use of the property could be made for that purpose, I thought covered the concern that you have.
It may well, Joe. I don't know, I'm asking, I'm, again, I'm asking it in terms of what's actually in the bylaw, I don't want to get down the path and...
I think the text of the bylaw almost doesn't need the 10-acre parcel portion of the text, it's in whatever footnote number it was. It's that you can only have one of whatever this is, however big it is, within that contiguous business park zone. Well, right now, we only have two contiguous business park areas, the one off of Deer Street and this one. So when this gets approved, if it gets approved, there can't be another one in that contiguous business park zone. So it's almost irrelevant what they do with the shape of the rest of the lot, because nobody in that business park zone is going to be able to do this if this is approved. So that means in town, you got Restaurant Depot and whatever this is going to end up in, and that's it. Unless we create another business park zone that's not contiguous to either one of these, then we'd be stuck with looking at a potential another special permit.
Yeah, so even if we acquired property that butts us, wouldn't give us the right to create any additional wholesaling within that zone. And it's 25% or 10 acres, whichever's less, so we're picking up...
And all of that, all of Shea's property is contiguous, it's in the same zone. So they can't do one down there either, if this is done.
Any other member? Joe?
I don't have anything at this time.
Ms.?
It's just the, you know, the couple of the findings, we're just concerned with traffic, and the concern with just, you know, harm of the neighborhood, right? Some of the, those are some of the things that taxpayers are worried about. And the draft motion, I guess the, we're looking at, I guess, one thing, hours of operation 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I'm a little concerned there with trucks coming in and out. You are right up against, you know, like I look at Wildwood Drive, in the close proximity to some of the neighborhoods there, right? So we're putting a business park right alongside of a residential area. So I'm concerned that, you know, a truck coming down that road at 2 o'clock in the morning, you know, is going to be potentially disruptive, and that's part of, you know, not disrupting the neighborhoods. You know, construction-wise, that, you know, we constrain the construction, but we're not going to constrain the actual kind of operations of it. So I worry there that, you know, if you compare it to, say, a Restaurant Depot, which is another type of warehousing facility, they're constrained, right, when they're timed. So I would prefer to see at least right now, some constraints on the time, and maybe when they come back with the potential customer, then we might be able to loosen up those constraints. But right now, I'd rather see us, let's constrain them a little bit more time-wise, you know, to, and that way we can fully understand what the operation will be, and how it'll affect the neighbors.
I think this language is what Restaurant Depot is.
Right now, though, it's still in 24 hours of operation.
Right. But the office hours are from 8 to 6.
Right.
So that, so the office hours relate to sales when jobbers would show up to pick up whatever it is, purchasing at wholesale. But this, as I recall, condition nine is exactly what Restaurant Depot has.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it is, I don't think it was, I, and we could certainly discuss it, I don't think it was an issue at Restaurant Depot, to be honest, at the time, because you have 40Bs right next to it.
Right.
So it was, I mean, the hope at that point in time was still to get a, what the business park zone originally was intended for in the rest of the parcels, that didn't happen.
Yeah, research and development, yeah.
So I, I mean, I don't, I don't think we even had a discussion about hours at that location when we did it.
That's all I have. Yes, name thing.
My name is Deborah Romero and I live in Wildwood Drive. I'm very upset. I've lived there for 30 years and raised my family there on Wildwood Drive. And so have other people too, and there's people that are different generations now raising their kids, people have literally died there and moved on and there's new families and children. It's a, it's a neighborhood that's now being encroached upon with business. And I understand that life is what it is and they have studies, I'm sure they're fine, all of the things. I just find it overlaps, it's people's lives. I lived there for 30 years, paid taxes every single year on time for 30 by myself. And a business coming in, it's overlap. We, we talked about last time about the traffic and needing some lights, you know. I get that, that in the name of progress, planning boards in towns, things grow and change, but it's not fair. So my thing, the heart of the matter for me and the neighbors is that it's not fair, it's the wrong thing to do, even though they have all their, their eyes dotted and their t's crossed. It's like I'm saying, oh, that sounds good, they go, good, you know? But it's not. We're going to hear backup trucks, more jake brakes, and I know that some of that's life, living in a, you know, there's just so much target and all those things. I can hear 495 in my bedroom. Like it's bad. I can hear jake brakes and horns beeping and cars zipping. There's no way that this traffic's not going to affect our personal lives, not just, you know, there's more traffic and, you know, get over it, girl, right? You know, it's busy. It's not fair. I'd like to ask the planning board to not do something like this, it's in the wrong area. There's so much potential for the neighbors and our lives and all down, even in Holliston right there. It's not fair. It's not a fair thing to do. It's something that makes sense from business perspective, that people own property and they want to rent it out to Amazon or whoever they're up to say who this, this little sacred client is. But the, the Amazon people that are in town already, the speeding, the traffic, it's brutal. So I just want to ask the board to consider that, that it's not just, their, like I said, their eyes are dotted, their t's are crossed. It all makes sense, it all sounds good sitting here from that and the different zoning and all this stuff. But the time, it's going to disrupt sleep. I work every single day to pay for my taxes. It's going to disrupt more. It's going to just cause traffic that's just going to be so brutal that you can never take it back and be like, yeah, there ain't no business to do. But we did it based on everything's sound and all the, the analysis on traffic. That all makes sense, but it's not reality. It's not the reality of a homeowner in a small dense street with an offshoot of Dogwood Drive and the street across the street there. I just, I just lost my train of thought with the name of that street. It's, it's, it's not, I don't think it's the right thing to do. It's changing the environment. It's already changing the life and growth anyway in businesses and companies. And I'd just like to ask the board to not do it.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Jim Langin, A Whistler Pine Drive. And first of all, I would like to thank the planning board and the town engineer as well, the engineering office. And the applicants have been very transparent in the information. But I have some concerns that are all a little bit to what this woman has said, but a little more factual. The applicant has indicated that, well, this will probably be more trailer trucks than vans. We hope that's a good thing. I think that's a very bad thing. For those of us that drive on that street every day, the truck traffic, anybody's ever been behind a truck knows that a tractor trailer has to turn very slowly, unlike a van. It does tighten up the time of the traffic study that is adding a second and a half is total nonsense. And I've seen it there many times in the morning when there's a tractor trailer coming up the other way and there's a gravel truck trying to get into the mine area. It takes a long time, vast traffic up all the way to 495 in one direction and all the way up past Whistler Pine Drive in the other direction. So the reality is, based upon 30 years of living in the area versus a hypothetical study, it's just not, it's just not reality. And those of us that have been involved in traffic studies know that the projections are projections. No projection has ever come out exact. Some have been high, some have been low. Problem is that once we live in the area and we have this after the fact, there's no real way to fix it. There's really nothing to be done about. The noise about the traffic is another issue. Because when we think of a business park, we don't think of tractor trailers coming in, tractor trailers. Residents who approve this kind of thing, they're thinking of an office building. And that's a big difference when you have car traffic coming in. They're not coming in at night. And that, I think we should address that issue with the tractor trailers coming in at night. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Can I have access to the mics, gentlemen? So it can be heard by both of you. Tom Sterns, Six Brook Field Road. I guess I have a question or an observation. So this is 10% of the entire property that Kevin Meehan owns there as well. How much more land is owned by Kevin Meehan that's supplying for this?
Well, the overall parcel is a little under 120 acres.
Okay.
This is 10 acres. Here's the plan.
So it's, yeah, that's what I, I was just, I thought I understood. So I assume that this may, this parcel is going to be used for what it's designed for and may pass that. But this is the beginning of something much bigger. And I don't know if the public is aware of that, because I don't think it's ever stated, obviously, but this is going to be developed far more than this small percentage, and this is opening the floodgates to that. So the concerns I think everyone has around traffic, but also encroachment, but also what little green space we have left, which I know it's private land and it can be developed. I'm not arguing that point. I'm arguing that we're in the moment of creating a comprehensive plan, we're trying to attract people. As I mentioned last time I was here, we're trying to attract people here. And that's what will revitalize our downtown. It's not what we build downtown, but what we bring people here. And we have the mountain bike trails there, and we have the disc golf course and the trail. And these things are bringing people to our community. And we're now going to have the beginning of a massive development that's going to expand and expand and encroach on Vietnam, which is a great attraction here. So I just want to expand upon what I think the other concerns are, is that this is the beginning of a lot of traffic, of a lot more building, of what is opening a floodgate to, I think, the 120 acres plus being built on, which is, I think, a detriment to the overall 10-year plan that I think we're all striving for. And I just want to make that point, because I didn't, I feel like the last four or five meetings, no one stated the obvious, that this is, this is 10 acres. And it's, yes, only zone for that, but it's so much more. And this really is the beginning of a wave of what I think is one of a piece of land that's important to us. So I thank you for your attention to that and appreciate your time.
It's the pleasure of the board.
Quickly going back to the hours of operation, just to clarify, you know, we're limiting the construction from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM on the Monday through Friday. I think I'd be, I'd be okay with that and having that part of the, the hours of operation to, like I said, to at least start off. And then as far as, you know, right now, I know that we have, let's see on that, there's no, no work on Sundays for the construction, but I'd be willing to, I guess, to talk through what we're thinking might be best for a Saturday or a Sunday that would be less disruptive to the neighborhood. Or is it Monday through, or Sunday to Saturday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and we're okay with that for at least from the start, starting standpoint?
Construction?
No, from the operational standpoint.
The operation. It's part of, the only thing I could see is the 24 hours of delivery, the delivery to, transfer back and forth is a 24-hour operation. Again, one of the thing, there's no backup alarms on tractor trail, on commercial tractor trailers, only on construction equipment, so the noise factor would be limited a little Jake brakes.
That's a state thing.
That's a state thing, but they put the signs up and take, the truckers do rely on them too much. Yeah, I don't see a problem with the 24 hour, because it's not going to be that much traffic in the off-hours. Even, you go down South, that's South Main Street and National Street, the track thing is a tremendous amount, but you don't see that many. The distance, the time distance.
I don't know when sleeping at that time.
Yeah, but the time distance between the tracks is, the delivery area immense, a long time, so.
Can we review operating hours with whoever the tenant actually is?
Just a provision, that's the point.
I mean, I don't have too much of an issue, but I mean, depending on what the tenant is and what they're using it for, you know, maybe, maybe we wouldn't want it at, you know, 24 hours, I don't know.
Well, but to the extent that the decision is crafted the way it is, the special permit initially gets issued to the applicant only. And then once he gets a tenant, they all need to come back in here and figure out what the next step is. So they're, they have the authorization under the special permit, not, not the applicant, the man, this applicant.
I understand that. I guess, I guess I want to, I'm saying it more to put it out there so that whoever is the tenant knows that we're at least looking at that as something that, you know, needs to be discussed. I guess that's the only reason why I'm saying.
Right. But they, they would have to discuss it with you because either way, you're going to have to open a public hearing again at some point in the future. What this special permit does is get him a building permit and he can start building it. So once he gets a tenant, the tenant needs to come back at a special permit to do something. They're either amending this or doing a whole new one, or modifying this, or depending upon what, what she decides, you may want to do it as a supplemental finding. I don't know that that's a good idea. I think they need to come back and amend this so that it gets assigned to them. And at that point, they'll be able to tell you, because none of us here know what appropriate hours would be. So I.
Yeah, that's, that's not, that's not where I'm going though, Larry. What I'm going to is Mr. Antonellis, I'm sure would know, a good lawyer is going to come in and say, wait a minute, the other one said that I could work 24 hours. I thought I was getting 24 hours and then we're playing that game. All I'm saying is, you know, to say, look, it's, it's going to be discussed when you come back in. The 24 hours was done as part of that, but I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there that I don't want to throw them back at us saying, well, you granted the 24 hours, so I still want the 24 hours. I don't know that there's an issue, but I'm just saying I'm, we're at least going to discuss it when it comes back in.
Oh, right, right. But I think in, just in, in general, anybody that has to get a special permit for anything modified are opening themselves up to that kind of scrutiny. So.
I can, I'm going to just get it out. A restriction on the hours of operation is a death knell to the project. It'll be non-financial and you will not find a tenant. Okay? That is the industry today, that is the world today. And I, I understand the concerns of the neighbors. I lived in a mixed zone. I understand what it's like to have retail and industrial traffic all around you all day. I don't diminish it. But the reality of the situation is that a restriction on hours for this type of operation will render the building unleaseable.
Well, the restriction right now is only for the office hours of 8 to 6.
Correct.
Which is different than saying the office, the wholesale facility is 24 hours.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with the restriction on the office aspects of it.
Right, right.
But the, the other part of it, because of the manner in which trucks travel across this country, okay? And the amount of time that a driver has to spend or can only spend in a truck, okay? If you, if you restrict the hours of operation, the building will not be leased. And we won't be able to get financing. So I'm going to put that out, and again, I'll leave it to the board. It's your decision. But I'm telling you that that will be a death knell to the project.
I'm sorry, I have to make a comment. Jim Langin, Whistler.
Speak to the chairman.
At least a building in Worcester, my business, and we don't take any truck deliveries. And I'm talking, we, we make machinery, big machines, and we don't take any truck deliveries at the 6:00 PM. Our building is $25,000.
You know how far we are from it? It's over 1,000. 1,500. That's over 20,000.
As far as the gentleman with the further development is, the rest of it can only be developed in the business park and they don't need a special permit to develop the rest of it. It's developable without a special permit. The only special permit required is for the wholesaling. And the restriction on the amount of wholesaling that we put in on the zoning bylaw, we changed it. So any other further development is a free, that they could have done anytime and any place. That's that. Yes?
Could we confirm if any of the so-called Vietnam bike trails are on this par, on this property? Some of them are.
They are.
Yeah? Well, the trail are, yeah.
Yeah, the trail are.
Yeah, but they're, what you call it, they're, first of all.
They're what?
Trespass.
Trespass. First of all, everyone is concerned about Vietnam and it's maybe a great thing, but they're the only ones who come in town doing everything with no parking, no, no, no observation of the zoning bylaws whatsoever in this town. And everyone is praising these, I mean, they're trespassing, they're doing everything without parking where everyone else has parking and it's, they're not exactly the best, the best corporate citizens we have. Anyone else?
I guess just to go back, you know, in talking to, to the potential tenants here, you know, I'm okay with the building itself. I just feel like, you know, the, the time restriction's the sticky point for me. And just, again, just the proximity to those neighborhoods and just fully understanding what the impact will be of a, of a truck, you know, because it's a truck, it's going to be loud, it's going to be shifting gears going up and down those hills. And we know that at whatever time the normal, you know, or the typical person goes to bed, that it's, it could potentially be disruptive. So I feel like that, to me, is something that needs to be addressed. The building itself and the location, I know that, you know, I'm okay with the development aspect of that, but the hours of operation are, that's going to be the, the go or no go for me.
I see. Could I add something to that? Deborah Romero, that, to talk about that, a woman brought it up last time, that depending on, like I said, I know my people don't want to, I guess they can't say Amazon, that I have no problem with, like, well, you were just saying like the land, whatever, the business park, whatever, it won't matter. But people go, trucks are coming, we're all over, and they're going to run, even if they're not in operation, but maybe somebody's sleeping in a bus truck or something, where they're running. And I'm going to go here, right, my backyard's right there. And so when other people have kids and stuff, it's just, it's not, it's not the right thing to do, it's the wrong plan. And part of me wants to say, even if it's not what the heart of the matter, well, maybe if they came through the project, then maybe they shouldn't do it, try someone else to do it. It's just going to be so disruptive and so, and the safety and, and I, you just don't, you just don't want, like, this is going to change lives. I mean, I got to work for another 10 years, you know? I'm in my 60s, but it's, it's not fair. I mean, I'll be able to sleep because of trucks that are allowed, especially if they do that, if they're refrigerated, if there's any kind of refrigeration stuff. I think that they have to run. So I want to hear that through, like, like, not even like, like through the trees, like right there. And it's not fair. I don't know why my other neighbors aren't here, I have no idea. I, I didn't rally them, I, my own problems in life, but I do think that if the project's not right, then they might as well, then they just go somewhere else. Kevin Meehan has plenty of money, plenty of opportunities, you know? This one just isn't a good one. Thanks.
Yeah, I don't, to be totally honest, I don't have that much issue. If you look at the distances.
One of the possibilities to address your concerns, Chris, would be that we could limit no idling on the property and further that you would understand that the delivery and the unloading, the loading and unloading all takes place inside the building into the thing. So I think a no idling rule on, on the property would eliminate any sound emanating from the property at, in what you would call the evening hours. We are, as Joe just pointed out, over, I believe, 1,000 feet of natural boundary between us and the nearest resident. And I, and we've used a provision like that on other projects that I've been involved in, so that you would have no idling. So the truck would have to come in and pull into a loading dock, and that would be it, and as, as Babe pointed out, there are no backup alarms on those commercial ones.
I guess, Larry, going back to the next phase, so, you know, if things went through with the provision of 24 hours, you're saying that they would still have to come through and potentially, or we would have the ability to limit the hours of operation, or are we concerned that once we go through with it as it's written here, that the hours of operation are just that, because the special permit granted them this?
No, we have the, we have, we have.
That's why I just want to be clear on it.
It has to come back for a special permit, because they're going to have to obtain the special permit, whoever the applicant is. You can discuss anything, I mean, I don't, obviously, I don't think you're in as strong a place or not, but I, I guess, I'm not, as, as you said, we're 1,000 feet away, we've got, we've got traffic on 16 to begin with that, that is, that noise level is, is probably much larger on 16 itself than it is going to be going through here at reduced speed, if you look at the turn radiuses and things like that that are in there, and if we, you know, if we eliminate idling, I believe we can, we can probably have a discussion if in fact there's a need for refrigeration, what we can do with refrigerator, with reefers as well, if, if that comes in as part of the special permit. You know, I think we can at least make it such that that noise is certainly no worse than what the noise that emanates out of 16 to begin with every, every day of the week is. And 16 is 16, I mean, if you're that close to, I mean, I can hear 495 from my house, and I'm nowhere near it, so, you know, it, it travels. It's just a fact of life nowadays.
Yeah, if the building were flipped so that all the truck parking were on what would be the west side versus the east side, you know, then that would have any noise directly that way, away from the few residences that are there.
I don't recall.
I mean, that's, that redesign theoretically is possible, just eyeballing it.
It might impact the drainage.
Yeah, I think that's.
That would be a huge drainage.
Yeah, but that's.
Not, not that it can't be pulled down, just saying.
But I think that the idea of, the whole purpose of having it issued to the applicant only and not running with the land was to force them to come back once they get not only the first tenant, but when that tenant leaves, the next tenant's got to come back to you too, at a public hearing, so, and I know applicants don't like that, because it opens it up again, and Joe will come in and argue that it shouldn't open it up again, and he'll be mad at me again.
Already did.
Yeah, already did.
I lost.
You know, that, to the extent that nobody knows who it's going to be now, it almost doesn't matter what, you know, what, what the restriction is, other than to, when you start changing it so drastically, it's going to make it impossible to use it all in somebody's mind, even though they have to come back to you to get a special permit updated to match what they want to do. So it's in, it's in the vein of what the, what the permit does in the first place, which is get him a building permit for that type of use with that layout, and that's all. I mean, that's a lot in terms of if he builds it, but that's not his problem. His problem is he needs to get a building permit so he can get a tenant. Even if he hasn't built the building yet, he needs to be able to show somebody he's going to, he can get the building permit.
What we're hoping is that before we put a shovel in the ground, we're back here with a tenant.
Yeah.
That's what we're hoping, okay? And again, we can't reach out to, there are people interested, not going to say that there's, not, I can tell you, you've been working at it, okay? But they all ask the same question, when, 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 and we can't answer that question until we have a special permit. We can predict the construction schedule, we can't predict whether or not, what else goes along, but I'm assuming we'll probably be back and seeing you sooner rather than later, I hope.
This gentleman has given up three times.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't see that.
No, it's okay. Just follow-up question, so if, what we heard was that if there's a provision, you can't work all night, then it's on, then we, you can't lease the place. What happens if they can't lease it at all? Do we have another empty building on?
Free taxes.
Free taxes.
Yep.
Okay. It opens up, they're going to sell it to somebody then at some point, so we're going to be back here changing the direction, but anyways, that point taken. I'm not a member of New England Mountain 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 Association, so I can't speak to the parking, but I can speak to like the vision, right? Let's, let's think beyond like, are we, are we trying to help organizations like that use their, they have, they do own 42 acres, and I know it's expanded beyond.
This topic, let's stick with this.
I'm just addressing the question, the, what I heard as a response to that, and I know we're on one topic, I'm just here to put my vision out there and hope you think, big picture. Thank you for listening.
I just, one, one more quickly, I know years ago when they were doing some construction up there and stuff, with casino and things like that, and there's some wetlands back there, and I remember they mentioned last time that the conservation committee went looking at that, I know there were like, years ago spotted turtles and different economic, you know, ecological world out there, so I didn't know if that, that's addressed before they do this, or is that something that's already taken place?
That's addressed through the conservation commission.
So that's, okay.
That's separate from us.
It's not, it hasn't, they've filed with the conservation commission, and it is on the 22nd of this month.
Oh, okay, so that might be, I mean, so, yeah.
They're sticking out of the wetlands. They've already addressed the, the development footprint, and none of the development footprints in the wetlands. They still need to go to conservation commission to get approval, because they're within buffer zones that trigger that.
And they're also crossing, they're, the roadway or, whatever you want to call.
The crossings.
There's crossings, but there's, I'll, I will say to Larry's point, there's nothing that, there's nothing in the site plan that I think is going to make the conservation commission say no. They may ask for, because otherwise I wouldn't let them, I would request that the planning board not finalize it until we got a little bit further with conservation. I think that if there are change, I, I expect that the conservation commission will acquire some changes, but they're going to be specific to the environmental concerns and not so much to the site plan.
Well, thank you for letting me in.
Pleasure to the board.
I, I do have one question, so.
Sure.
If it, if we can entertain it, so the layout, why did we select the entrance on 16? Is it possible to have it come out 85?
No, there's no access.
No.
Have it come out where?
It doesn't connect.
On 85.
There's no connection?
No.
It doesn't.
No connection.
Steep grades, wetlands, yeah.
It doesn't abut.
Yeah.
Mind, mind going up and, yeah, it's going up and down, but it doesn't.
The amount of land that he owns, I, I just figured I'd ask.
Yeah, that's his possibility, abutting parcel might have access, but it just doesn't. I think Mr. Shays might have some limited access through 85.
No, he's got a major wetland crossing too.
I'll discuss his stuff, so. For the boards, for the boards, again, the board has been cooperative, receptive of our proposal, we appreciate the time and consideration the board has given us. We believe we've made a significant attempt to meet and have met the criteria set forth in the bylaw, and again, reviewed the proposed decision, and I found that the conditions would be acceptable to, to the applicant, and the conditions that were asked, or excuse me, suggested as additional conditions tonight are also acceptable to the applicant, and again, well, on behalf of the applicant, I thank the board for its time, and I don't believe there's any further evidence we're, we, we intend to present, so.
I'm fine with it, I mean, close the public hearing, make a motion to close the public hearing. I don't think we're going to, I don't think there's anything else outstanding, and I can change it to we close the public hearing and approve the special permit subject to Larry's draft, plus the, the issues that we've talked about tonight in regards to.
No idling on the property.
Yeah, no idling on the property. What else did we have, Larry?
Issues with the conditions relating to the steep slope and the geotech.
Oh, the geotech, yeah, above 10 feet. Just, just in asking, because I know this came up the last time, did anybody ever reach out to MassDOT about the Jake break and the possibility of putting a sign out on?
Yeah, we, we would reach out during the access permit process on behalf of the town for that, but we haven't, we need to get the local approval before getting to that point, but we would submit our plans that with a request from MassDOT to evaluate that as well.
So what was your, your first condition was the no idling? Is that what?
Yeah, no idling.
Yep, and, and then the geotech, the steep slope.
Interstate commerce, it doesn't require us no more than five minutes idling anywhere.
Yeah. I don't think we had anything else. I guess depending on how, I, I should have taken my glasses, because I can't see it. Seeing how you showed that detail with the, with the geofabric, was that shown on, on all? All slopes then, or what was that detail in reference to?
No, we, we showed it on slopes of two to one slopes, that's why I was saying, if you specify on the condition that you want them three to one slopes, ten feet or more, for the details.
Because I was just going to say, am I, am I saying something we don't really need, because your detail already showed it, but if you're showing it on two to one, we want to do it on three to one, okay? So, yeah.
Yeah, the detail on the roadway was, was something that you.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's just, that's me saying, hey, I'd call Liz to go out when you're building the road, so that way we have that, I don't, you know, that's up to you, if you don't, and you, you want to change it in the future, I'm not going to say dig it up and redo it, if it's something that we get involved with, so I'm, I'm just doing that as a heads up more than anything, I don't think it needs to be in the, yeah, in the decision.
Give her a second.
I'll second.
The move in second, that we close the public hearing?
We say, Chris, did you say?
Yes.
Approve the decision upon the, what the notes that were taken are going to be done.
I guess one point of discussion?
Yes.
Just as, as we move along, as you heard me say, will be definitely the tenant that moves forward, just, you know, the noise and the impact, you know, that's going to be something that, that you just heard me say tonight, that I will be mindful of, and so as we go through this process, please bring that amount of information, because you know I'm going to be asking for it.
You may, again, this, this goes off, you, you may, between now and then, want to take a look at just doing a relatively quick noise study, I don't know what the elevations are out there and things like that, but you may, you may want to have that type of data available next time through.
I appreciate the comment, because Derek just mentioned it to me about five minutes ago, he wrote a note about that, so, yeah.
It's a, yeah, it's a significant, it's significantly higher.
Yeah, I sort of figured it was, it was probably significantly higher, and depending on what you have out there, there may be limited, limited amount of, of sound that actually gets out to wild wood, I, I don't know, but it's, you know, having that type of information next time through will certainly be, will certainly make it easier.
Any further discussion? There are none, all those are in favor? Four, four in favor, one abstention.
No, mine said no.
You're a no.
If the hours of operation stayed eight to six, I'd be, I'd be in favor of it, but I'll vote no.
Aren't they eight to six?
Meaning loading. I, I think it would be unfair to the neighbors to, to have all the noise at 24-hour period. Most, most facilities, mine as well, that I work at, loading hours are seven to three. I'm not in favor of this.
You can agree to the condition, or you can seek to withdraw without prejudice.
Well, but they already voted on the motion subject to the draft, so you're saying as they come back with tenants, you're saying that they should be mindful of that when they come back with other, once they get a tenant, because they'll be back for a special permit.
Well, we're, I, I mean, if we, if we eliminate item nine, that's clearly.
Well, you didn't.
You didn't.
No, he's not in favor, is what I'm saying.
I'm not in favor.
Oh, but you just voted.
So it's three in one.
No, he voted against, he voted against. Three in favor, one opposed, one abstentionary. Actually, it's not really abstentionary.
So it fails. So you need, you need another, I guess they don't need another motion. So, special permit denied.
Kent was hard after.
Oh, Kent.
I didn't think so, but I was just sure.
And we can't agree to the hours of operation?
I don't know, can't get a, can we still agree to that?
I, I could ask for, if we agreed to a limitation on hours, I could ask the board for reconsideration before, but you'd have to agree to the hours of operation.
Can we just ask for reconsideration to another hearing? And what's the hours of operation?
I believe Joe said, Joe, can I ask you again, just, what were the hours of operation you suggested?
I mean, I'd be, the way you have it in, in note nine, I think it says eight to six?
That's the office.
Right, but that's reasonable for loading as well. The, the rest of the, the rest of it says four hour operation.
Again, we, we appreciate the board's consideration, thank you for your efforts, we're disappointed with the results, thank, but again, always do respect to this board, thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I explain on the benefit, why I'm abstaining?
Yeah.
You're not even really abstaining. Yes, that's true, I'm just, I'm simply not voting.
She was not involved in all the public hearings, so once you're not involved in one public hearing, you cannot vote.
For special permits, and that's, I believe, state law that requires that, they have to be in attendance for each session of the public hearing, and I was not a member of the board when this hearing opened initially, so I'm not under law permitted to vote. I'm very professional, John, I'm impressed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the list, we've got 31 Beaver Street, Amanda.
Hello, back again. All right.
So you remanded the report?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, amended site plan, Milford Realty, 31 Beaver Street, applicant requests amended site plan, approval of construction, industrial building, associated parking on 8.9 acre subject property, in an IB zoning district, specifically 52,000 square foot industrial building will be utilized for manufacturing, processing, and research purposes, is expected to employ 20 people in manufacturing, with the proposed 2,200 square feet of office area, expected to employ four management and administrative. Facility will be connected to town water, but will utilize an onsite septic system in lieu of connecting to town sewer. A total of 41 off-street parking spaces are being provided, a minimum of 28 are required. Vehicle circulation is appropriate for the proposed use, with drive aisles and fire lanes designed to accommodate equipment and truck turning. A complete stormwater report as well as.
well as an engineered retaining wall plan, has been submitted with the site plan, and an updated traffic report and assessment statement has been submitted for the proposed use. It is suggested that any future freestanding sign be shown on the plan, which I believe it's shown, but it's shown on town property. So, site plan approval would be for locational purposes only. They'd still need an easement from the select board if they choose to put a sign up there. Task for your references is the executed access easement deed for the so-called parcel T-22. That's actually where the sign's located. It's a small town-owned parcel adjacent to Beaver Street, as approved under Article III of the 102422 Special Town Meeting. All other applicable zoning and site plan requirements appeared to be met. Therefore, I recommend approval subject to relevant agency comments. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you, Larry. So Amanda Cavallieri with Gary Aaron Hellman. We were before the board about a year or so ago with another tenant. They'd since sold the property, and Milford Realty Development has purchased it, and they're looking to develop it, like Larry said, with a 52,000 square foot building for manufacturing, processing, and research. There is no tenant at this time. They have a few interests, but right now, no tenant. It's an allowed use by right in this zone. We're planning to go to Conservation Commission on the 22nd. We've submitted the notice of intent along with the other documentation required for that review. We've gotten comments back from water, sewer, highway, and fire as well. Fire, we did, we were able to talk to the chief, and he had a couple recommendations with the fire hydrant. What are you doing?
I'm coloring. I'm trying to color it to match your...
Hey, take that one out of there.
Can't do it these days.
I know. So, just to show you, there's a hydrant, there's a hydrant right in this corner that the fire chief had a question on about the guardrail. So, we're going to put a gap in the guardrail and have the hydrant set back a little bit, just for easier access and, and operation. And we have to reevaluate the dumpster locations, depending on the tenants that come in, based on fire code requirements. We have the two dumpsters proposed in the front of each section of the building. And we are doing a replication area that's going through Conservation Commission, and overall, the area that was impacted under the prior approval is within the same area that was proposed to be disturbed, within the limits of the erosion control. And lastly, one of the conditions of the last approval was we had to submit the engineered drawings for the retaining wall, and the applicant at that time didn't go to that level. They ended up selling the property in between. So, we incorporated the retaining wall designs into, into the submittal. So, we should have everything that was required under the, the prior approval.
Any questions from the board?
What's the retaining wall design?
The retaining wall design was, you should have it in your drawings.
It's the same blocks that they're, I think it's the same blocks they used behind...
The one with the setbacks?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Is the wall drawn correctly on the plan, Liz?
Not, it doesn't, it's not the, it's not the, yeah, it's not the versalock.
Yeah.
I did not check that lens.
You have those drawings too, correct?
Depending on what, depending on what the height is, that, that's more than a straight line, so I want to make sure that the front and back of wall is shown correctly on the plans.
It might have been in a, it should be a separate file. It wasn't, it was a separate file.
Yeah, I don't want, he's asking about is what it looks like on the site.
Yeah, where's the, where's the...
Also four, four foot max on the detail sheet.
On the detail sheet, and then...
That's, that's for...
Anything under four feet.
Yeah. Then there's a separate...
There's a separate sheet or set of details for the engineers.
There are separate, separate, three-sheet set that was part of the design submittal. So, the geo grid?
Yeah.
Who is the...
So, this, you just said, how tall is it? Oh.
No, what I'm worried about is with that.
No, I know, I, yeah.
Those sections are probably, it's got to be two, four, six, eight. It's got to be at least 10, could be 12. Four feet between. I would, I would think those are four-foot blocks, no?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was saying a 24-inch deep block, and it's a two-inch offset per block.
So it's, yes, I mean, I, that's, that's what I, I just want to make sure that the plans show, I mean, you've got eight inches, plus the thickness is 24, so you've got almost three feet from, from front face to back face, and we always get a drawing that shows a single line, and it's like, well, wait a minute, how come nothing fits? I want to make sure that the line actually is three feet wa, you know, three feet wide for the wall, is what I'm saying.
No, and we actually, based on comments that we received at the last hearing for the prior applicant, was to shift the erosion control back a little bit further to give us that additional room for construction.
So, I mean, I, there's, there's enough room, but...
If you go to the next sheet, I think is, or one of, either that sheet or a couple back, they have top of wall, bottom of wall on all the...
Yeah, what we're looking for is the horizontal space that the wall takes up, which isn't really shown here.
That's part of it.
That's what this is.
Yep.
It's, so this is, this black line is the retaining wall, and hopefully measure this. I'm thinking it's not three feet, it's a...
That could be a condition of approval, just have it before we sign the bill or...
Yeah, because the other thing I'm going to ask is, is that guardrail on the, by the, by the wall?
It, yeah, so it's, was that shown on? I just wanted to see if it was on the details.
Yeah.
I believe it's going in front of the wall. It's not going on the wall.
Even if it's in front of the wall?
If it's in front of the wall, you, you got two issues. You've got your geo grid that you're going to break up with the post, which isn't a big deal, but you should make sure that that's...
In the calculations.
It's in the calculations, and in the calculations that you have guardrail, which I would assume the, the engineer has not taken into account that he has to, he has to take a loading for a guardrail.
Okay. We can double-check with the calculations with the, with the design engineer.
And then, at the same time, Liz, when they, when they do that and come back, we should be clear. We should show front face, back face of wall on planes. The other comment that I had is, on the traffic letter, if you can have that signed with a PE.
Sure.
Just in case something ever comes up without having it signed by a PE. I mean, there's nothing earth-shattering in those calculations, I know. It's just taking data out of the IT manual, but... That's all I have.
And the comments from the board? It's a pleasure of the board.
I mean, so it is going to be in front of Conservation, which I assume should be pretty simple for them to show it for the, for, as far as the wall, but I think it would be more of a calculate, you know, pretty simple if you're comfortable with the calculations showing that it's...
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think there's anything earth-shattering with it. I mean, I have no problem approving it subject to... Subject to the plan. Resubmitting the plan showing front and back face of wall and resubmitting the calculation, well, I shouldn't say resubmitting the calculations, something from the structural engineer to indicate that the calculations were provided, knowing that there is a, a guardrail.
I would almost prefer just a statement from the engineer stating something.
And whether, and I guess is part of that, and as to whether he, he requires any special detail for where the guardrail goes through the, because I don't know what the depth of the guardrail is, if he's going to go through one or two layers of the geofabric, of the geotextile, I should say. So I, yeah, I, I don't, I don't think that the, this, and also that the traffic analysis gets signed by a PE.
And all of the stuff associated with the wall has to be provided before they can get zoning compliance from the building department anyway, because it's a wall over.
Yeah, I'm just...
I, I'm...
I'd rather I know that I took care of it than somebody else.
So, that was a motion?
Yes.
With four conditions, structural engineer's statement, retaining wall details, address the guardrail issue, and have the traffic letter signed by PE.
So, I'm happy with...
I second Joe's motion.
They moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. And Mr. Five?
Thank you so much.
Actually, before we, before we go though, I did have, there was a statement made, I just wanted to make sure I understood it. You had said something about the dumpsters and that they might have to be moved or not moved. I mean, effectively, this is approved with the dumpster shown where you had them. If they get moved, you're going to have to come back.
So it's a fire code, so it depends on the materials of the tenant?
You have to move them, you've got to come back. You can't, contrary to popular belief in the town of Milford, you can't move dumpsters without them coming back to the town of Milford. It's part of the site plan.
Perfectly fine. Thank you.
Okay, next, we got Milford Hospitality. This is amended site plan, Rail Trail Flat Bridge, 221 to 23 Main, in a CA zone. The applicant's requesting amended site plan approval for the subject property to add a portable storage container to the subject property. Portable, portable storage containers are considered portable warehouses for the purposes of zoning, and as such, require a special permit from the ZBA. The ZBA did grant the necessary special permit at their June 13th meeting. The decision's included in your packet. The, the container had been installed without approvals adjacent to the patio, the rear patio area behind the restaurant. The container is for the storage of firewood used in the operation of the restaurant kitchen. In addition to adding the container, the dumpster enclosure is proposed to be relocated to near the former bank drive-through structure off Exchange Street. The fire chief has noted possible setback issues under the fire code that need to be addressed. Also, the applicant's seeking approval of several changes to the parking sidewalk and traffic circulation that have also been made to the site without planning board authorization. There's no clear traffic pattern in the central area of the lot, and the handicapped accessible parking location was changed and lengthened the accessible route to the west entry. Staff has suggested a reconfiguration of the parking area that would address some of the above noted concerns, and in, and actually increase the number of parking spaces. There's a sketch plan attached in the packet. So, I'd recommended that Plan B, or review be continued, so they can adequately address it. The applicant's here, he does have some plans with him, so...
So we had to make, hi, hello, I'm Jason Kleinerman. I'm one of the owners and partners at Rail Trail Milford. Nice to meet you. Nice to see you again. Also, I'm an operator of the businesses as well. So unfortunately, two of my partners are away. One is in Greece and one is in Egypt. And our site engineer had another, other meeting in another district. So unfortunately, I'm, I'm what you're stuck with. But I do have, so our engineer did make some changes. Can I pass out a couple things?
Certainly.
Would that be okay? So, well, one main change from this site plan that you're looking at there, which is the fire chief had asked us to move the ten from the way from the overhang. There's an overhang, if you look at the top part of the plan, that we're not, we don't want to disturb, we don't have any plans for that. It's barriers basically closing it off. But if you look at the, what I just handed you, you'll see that he's moved that dumpster enclosure so that it, it meets the 10-feet distance. The fire chief had had an issue with that, so we, we already had him address that. As far as this goes, you know, we, we, Larry has been kind of really helpful with this, because there's been quite a few different things that we didn't realize how it all had to go down and how it had to work. We had met with Elizabeth at one point, multiple times in the parking lot. We met with the building inspector. We tried to follow what our site engineer was telling us. I think at some point, we may have not done things in the correct order, but we're trying to rectify everything. And so Larry's advice was, because really what we're here to do is to approve our, our patio in a more permanent way. Right now, we have a temporary approval for the back patio. We don't technically have approval for the front patio, and we're not using it either, but we, it is included in this site plan. So, in the bottom right corner is where Rail Trail is, 221 to 23 Main Street. That's us. The patio is to the, to the left in the drawing, and to the right in the drawing facing Main Street.
Go ahead.
Sure, okay. So, that was the main reason for us to come, but Larry suggested, in, in going for that process, we had realized that we needed to get an approval for our wood container, so we went, we started going through the official process for that. And then Larry suggested that we kind of handle as many of these issues as we can now, including moving the dumpster. Right now, the dumpster is located right here. That was what was on the original site plan. By the time we got down the rabbit hole and trying to get open and over budget, we didn't have time to get everything, get that moved, so it's still sitting right there. But we want to move it up to that other area. You could see it on the plan. Just because I think, you know, it's dumpster sitting in the middle of the parking lot, right next to cars. It's ugly, and we have that underutilized space up at the top. So those are, those are the things. I also have a letter from the engineer. I don't know if you guys have been furnished with a copy of it, but he kind of goes through it. This is back from July 11th. I don't know if I should pass this out as well, if you'd like to see it.
No, I don't think that's going to help. If you look at the three plans that I had in the packet, the 11 by 17, first one is the one they submitted with this application. The second page is the one that you'd approved back in 2021. As you just mentioned, the dumpster was floating in the middle of the parking lot, but you notice the part, the way the sidewalk comes in from Park Street, it goes straight, and all the handicap spaces were up near the entryway. So, you flip back to the page, to the first plan, and you see a noticeable jog in the sidewalk because they decided... in the sidewalk because they decided to reconstruct it. They moved all the handicap spaces even further away from the door, uh, and, and that's how it stayed. Uh, so what I'd suggested was the last page that has the green, uh, landscaping, did you find it? Oh, there you go. So it has, uh, Choker Islands located, uh, in positions that reestablished that straight shot in from Park Street into the center of the, of the parking area. Uh, it also adds, uh, one, two, three, it adds five, uh, parking spaces, uh, to the middle bay that runs out, uh, to the floating island, uh, with landscaping in that, and that reestablishes, uh, circulation pattern. And then the several times that I've been passed there, people are already parking perpendicular, uh, up against the west curb where they were showing parallel parking spaces. One, two, three, four, five, six, I had seven spaces there, uh, perpendicular onto that other curb island, and then do a choker island at the end, um, of the stalls coming, uh, down from Exchange Street. If you did that, you clean up the circulation pattern, add more parking, which should help them, but it defines, uh, a drive aisle configuration that isn't in conflict, uh, with sidewalks and people sitting out there eating, uh, and it reestablishes a relatively safe pattern. So that's what I would recommend be required to fix the parking lot. But the landscaping areas need to have the materials removed, uh, and soil replaced. Uh, there's also, uh, a need, I think, to balance out, uh, the additional paving that's being proposed in the new dumpster area, which even, it, proposed is slightly less than, than what's showing on that. But even so, that area that Liz is, uh, running the cursor around is a new impervious surface, so to balance that out, the new green space in the choker islands, the landscaping would help, um, with that impervious, uh, ratio.
One piece, uh, Larry, I forgot to mention was, we also made the dumpster enclosure smaller and pulled it out, so if you look at the plan, um, we're not, we're, we're trying to minimize also the amount of green space that we're, um, producing. So if you look at that plan, uh, we've, we've made it, um, smaller, uh, I guess lengthwise or horizontally, or like left to right on the, on the picture, so it's smaller this way, and it's been pulled forward, so now it's over what is already, um, parking lot, so.
It's further over what's already parking lot, but it's still eliminating, so, um, the, it's still eliminating green space and putting in additional impervious, and the way that the stormwater regulations, um, read is that if you're, um, adding impervious and that literally means even a sidewalk, um, then you have to meet the regulations to the maximum extent practical, which is typically, um, seen as meeting it for the area of impervious that you are proposing. Actually, you can't meet it, you have to meet it for the, you, it's not to the maximum extent practical, it's, you have to meet it fully for, um, at least the area that you're adding impervious. So you would need to try and do infiltration on the site, which I can't imagine is even practical. And you would need to do TSF removal treatment, it's a whole thing that you don't want to get into. If you just, if you just take, and I don't know, I, I, you need to have your engineer do the math as to what you're proposing for an increase in impervious, and you just need to add in enough green space so that you're offsetting the balance, and then, and then you don't have to meet those same regulations.
So I'm, I'm more than happy to go back to our site engineer and explain that, what you're saying. Yeah, we, okay, that would be good, because we, I, we spoke before this, and he was kind of explaining some of the stuff that I didn't understand to, uh, which you're now explaining. So, yeah, we've tried to reduce the amount, and then I think he's, he's, um, we, we understand that we'll have to probably go back to him to figure out how that's all going to play out.
One of the, um, issues that I, I guess, want to point out is that based on the plan that you just provided, you only have 21 feet in between the, in between the, um, the dumpster and the curb. So on, it's from this corner to the curb. On, on the plan you just provided, it's only 21 feet, and we require 24.
That's an area that I would suggest be blocked off, uh, the way it's been required up until now, um, because the board had, uh, and properly so, had concerns, if you look on the, uh, 2021 approved set, uh, that there are temporary jersey barriers, uh, in a couple of locations up there to prevent parking on that old drive-around, uh, paving. So, uh, part of what these plans that you're providing show is that the jersey barriers up near Exchange Street are disappearing, and, uh, three parking spaces are being placed there.
Well, yeah, I think...
Then the other jersey barriers...
I was talking about these three up here.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the other three, uh, or the other two, uh, are disappearing altogether. So I would suggest that based on your latest dumpster location, uh, that, uh, that would be fine, but the jersey barriers would be in the 21-foot narrow space and, and prevent vehicles from going up there.
I think he also has that as a snow removal area as well, marked, uh, in that back area. So I would, you know...
Well, but I think it would be helpful if your engineer, number one, knew what he was doing and could draw a plan that accurately reflected it. I sent him a copy of my sketch plan, hoping that maybe he would take a shot at, uh, showing some adjustments, and what we get back is what you brought, which doesn't show any of the other adjustments, but it does show, uh, a smaller dumpster that now intrudes onto the driveway, so it's only 20 feet wide.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think we expect that this is the beginning of a process, um, not, you know, there's a lot...
Well, I'm expecting this to be the end of several months of ignoring all the requirements and just doing things on your own, and your engineer was part of that. He designed that mess down there.
Oh, I understand. Yeah, no, I understand your, that point of view, but, but what I'm saying is that I don't think we're coming in here, there's two, again, you, you made the recommendation that we try to rectify everything in one shot, and there's, there was many different things that we had to do outside of just the patio. So the patio is really the, the impetus for us to start this process of trying to get the dumpsters moved, but we also didn't expect that every aspect of this plan could be approved in one shot, because there's a lot of, obviously, there's a lot of, uh, different things that we have to be aware of to do it the right way. So, you know, I, I, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, that, um, you, you were expecting more, but I think we're expecting, and some of these issues, that we're, we're going to have to figure out what the recommendations of the board is, and then go back to the engineer and speak with him, and then make some alterations.
I think typically the process in Milford is that, um, applicants work with staff, and we operate under the known of what, you know, having dealt with these people, um, the board members for, for, in Larry's case, a, a vast number of years. Um, and then if there's, if there's one or two, like, sticking points, which even on a project this size, there really shouldn't be, um, but if there's one sticking point that you came to the board and you didn't agree with what Larry or I were saying, and you wanted to, to get, get the information from the board as well, then that, that would be one thing, but that's what Larry means by it's, it's not part along as we anticipated because we anticipated that you were going to address our issues, because our issues...
From the message that you sent, the, the, the email that you sent?
I...
Was, or some, there was one email, there was two, there was one, there was the firefighter, the fire chief's recommendation, so...
Sent the, along with his letter about setbacks. But that was one issue.
There's, there's letters from both, from both Liz and Larry that need to be addressed before we, I, I, I mean, I, I could tell you, I don't think there's anything earth shattering here, I think if you get through the comments that staff had, I don't think you'll have a problem with the board approving it, I don't think I'm going to have a problem with it, but there are certain issues that you need to, that you're going to need to address that they brought up in, in their letters, you know, the, if you end up with the way the plan shows now, you end up with some amount of additional impervious. We don't have a choice, stormwater doesn't give us a choice to get away from that, you're going to have to show how you mitigate that, what you're going to do. You can change that by putting in some additional planting areas, that's up to you, we're not going to tell you what to do, but that's up to you to do. The, the fact that you need a certain amount of clearance for the dumpsters, we're not going to waive that, you're going to need to do that. So you need to look at where you want to put your dumpster, how you want to do it. I think if you have a conversation with staff, you may find that there's, there may be a better location or opportunity for that, but that, again, that's going to be up to you, but we need to make sure that that, as, as I said before, we need to see where the dumpster is, and then it's got to stay there as part of the site plan that we approve. So I, I mean, I don't, I, you know, what, what's shown in here certainly looks like, again, Larry pointed out that, that the, the flow through the parcel wasn't that great, this certainly clears that up, it gives a, you know, it gives, it gives a level of, of flow out to Exchange Street from, from Congress and, and going through there, so I think that that works. You're going to need to, uh, I know I read through Liz's comments, you're going to need to make sure that your handicap accessible sites are in fact handicap accessible, and you're going to need to show us what that grading is so that it, we, we're comfortable that it does in fact meet the ADA requirements. Again, that's something that we can't waive or not, we just need to know that it, that it does in fact meet, so I think if you go through Liz and Larry's comments, I think it'll be fine.
I guess I just want to clarify something. We only wanted, look, we were going into the summer, we, we realized that the patio, there was some oversight around the patio that we had missed something. We need to get approval for the patio, so we tried to work as much as we could with the town. We really wanted, my, our engineer, uh, really just wanted to deal with the, the patio. You know, Larry said, well, let's just go through the process and do the whole thing if you're going to go in front of the board. So, 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 and I understand what you're saying now, but I understand what you're saying now.
Right.
Yeah, we're not going to approve the patio with, with the fact that the site didn't represent what was out there.
So the, the fact that there are, there were changes that were took place beyond what was approved, that they will not approve a change to the plan until you fix, either fix what was wrong.
Right, no, I understand that now, I, I'm just trying to clarify from our perspective, we are just trying to go through the process, so I didn't know that we were, you know, showing up, you know, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm very embarrassed right now that we're showing up unprepared, but I, I just thought we were going through this process today, get the comments so that we can go back and make it the way it needs to be, and come back to you. You know, I, I guess that we didn't, didn't come in the right order, but that was just kind of what we were trying to do. Uh, I really have been...
We've been a lot of time with you up in the town administrator's office, explaining the whole process and offering multiple times to have your engineer come in so that we can give you the comments, and in fact, we can literally draw you a picture as to how to fix it, because you went ahead and made changes beyond what you got approved. So we've been trying to help you...
I sat, I sat with you in the office, with our, with our site engineer, and...
Ignore it and, and go off on your own. You've got one of the, you've got a gold mine here, and you've taken every opportunity to screw it up. I just don't understand that mentality. We're trying to help you. Trying to help you, so I, my suggestion is you continue this till the 3rd of next month, and have your engineer come down and talk with Liz and myself, and we'll draw another picture.
Okay.
Thank you so much, we hope to see you... Before we go, I mean, I, beyond the parking, I know the other thing was the, um, storage, I guess.
Snow storage, yeah.
Snow storage for the wood storage.
Talking about the thing, the special permit, yes.
The special permit, yeah, for the container.
That's going to be different, or is that part of, going, right, so...
Does anybody have an issue with that?
That's what I was going to go with. Just, since he's here, I'd like to make sure that we, yeah, let him leave with any other issues on any other aspects of the site plan. I know, obviously, the parking is now changing, the, and the, um, uh, we have the storage, so just want to make note of that. I know that that storage is already there, you're, you're coming back to us to ensure that you get the right permitting for that. I know that ZBA has reviewed it, and they have their stipulations, you know, the form, my, my thing when, when it first came here was to ensure that you've got a steel storage container. I'm concerned with it over time, you know, uh, dumpsters we put behind fencing because we, you know, they're, they're dumpsters, right? They're going to rust out, and they're, they just don't look nice after a few New England winters. I'm concerned with this, I know the ZBA has stipulated that, um, that they want to make sure that it stays freshly painted and all that, so I'm good with that. I just want, again, making note of that as a, from here and also from the planning board side, and as someone that would be going to that restaurant, that I think that's very important to make sure that we maintain that, because if you don't, then I feel like then the stipulation of having some type of fencing like we do around dumpsters is going to be necessary.
Yeah, that, that's a design element for us, um, if you, you know, Rail Trail has a bit of a rustic kind of vibe to it, so the, that's kind of intentional, what we were trying to do there. So, you know, keeping the entryway, you know, presentable is going to be paramount to our success. I mean, it's really the main entry, more than Main Street in some ways, just because of the parking. And we just, you know, it kind of gives a little bit of a vibe, uh, having the wood there, and, you know, it kind of matches the aesthetic, so, but we understand that, I mean, we intend to keep it kind of in good repair, um, along with the rest of the entry.
I guess, Liz, that meets its current location, the current pad, it meets kind of our standards.
That was the only concern I had of the whole thing, of the, the, the storage container was, that it was maintained and painted, that was, I don't know, I had no problem with it at all, whatsoever.
If, if they wanted to build a building right there, they would be able to, instead of putting a container there. That's what you're asking, right?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that what it's on, because it's on a pad that was not appro, in a sense, approved yet, and it's sitting there, that we're comfortable with the infrastructure that that container is sitting on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we want to continue this, uh, when's the...
September 3rd. September 3rd.
September 3rd.
So can I arrange for my engineer to just have a call with you?
Yes, um...
Is it, I mean, I guess...
Call during business...
Maybe Larry as well, with, you know...
Yeah, I think it's helpful to, I mean, I sincerely think it's help, it's helpful for me to come down if that's possible, but if not, yes, a phone call, I guess, would be, it's just nice to, as, as an engineer, I'm going to tell you, I really like sitting down and being able to draw pictures with another engineer, because it, that's how we talk to each other. Not good with my words.
I will, I'll, I will request him to try to make an appearance in person, yeah.
Yes, September 3rd, it'll be available.
September, we continue to, uh, September 3rd.
So, so we can continue to operate the patio under the temporary kind of stipulations we have?
Yeah, I don't think anyone's going to come after you, to tell you the truth.
It's not really this board, it's the...
Yeah, it's not us.
Is there any change to the patio that you're going to have, or just operate the patio as it is?
No, right now, it's as it is, and we'll, you know, in, in the future, if we have to do anything to the site, I mean, there, there's some discussion of kind of changing the way the front is, but then we would come back before you when that time comes.
Yeah, no, I got no problem. Who made the move?
Well, just, it's, it's the building officials' call, I... Well, just, it's, it's the building officials' call. You've been operating, the fact that you're in front of us trying to correct it, I would think, he has the, he actually has the right. You have a, you have a plan that doesn't, that doesn't follow what was originally approved. I don't think anyone's going to go out at this point and say, no, you can't use it anymore. You know, they've allowed you to use it through this point. I would assume he's going to continue that, but it's, that's not our call. But the fact that you've, you've come to us and are trying to correct that certainly is going to help you in terms of talking to anybody else in the town. Let's put it that way.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any further discussion? Here are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, unanimous of five.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
We got special permit referral for 181 Congress Street.
Yeah. Can request special permit to allow for the construction of a detached garage on the subject property. Property consists of one single-family dwelling on a 22,000-square-foot lot, landlocked lot. Specifically, the proposal is to construct a 24-by-30 detached two-car garage on the property. The structure itself will meet side and rear yard setback requirements. Special permits required due to the non-conforming nature of the property as it has no frontage. Access to the property is provided by a 20-foot right-of-way over map 26 block zero, lot 27A to Congress Street. I've attached the 81P plan that created that. Some town planner by the name of Martha White signed the plan.
I saw that.
And I forgot to sign the report. So anyway, the plan is there in the attachments. The 81P plan's there, and the last page is actually an aerial that.
Which I now have on the screen.
Oh, you got it, okay. So the new garage being proposed is just, just southeast of the pool. I'm not sure what else he could put on there, but I'm sure he'll try.
How the hell did we ever end up with this?
So I recommend a favorable report be forwarded to the ZBA.
Yeah, pretty funny.
It's a pleasure of the board.
I didn't think, I didn't think he needed one myself.
I mean, the next one, the next one's going to be one of those.
I didn't, I didn't think he needed a special permit because the house got built when the lot had no frontage. Didn't seem to bother anybody then, but between the building department and the legal department, they think he needs a special permit because it's non-conforming, so here we are.
I'm happy to make a motion to send a favorable report to the ZBA for 181 Congress Street.
Second.
Moved in second, we send a favorable report for, to the zoning board. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, unanimous of five.
Okay, moving right along.
Purchase Street, 359, 355.
Yep. ZBA variance request, requesting a variance from lot frontage, lot width, and lot shape factor requirements to allow for the construction of a single-family dwelling on the subject property. I've listed the variance requests there. 50-foot frontage requested where 120 is required. 36.48 lot width where 140 is required, and the lot shape factor 40.3 requested. There shouldn't be feet after that, it's just a factor. 22 maximums allowed. The combined parcels that comprise the subject property are regularly shaped due in large part to the extensive wetlands and watercourses adjacent to the property. This has evolved over a number of years with trading and land swapping properties back and forth to end up the way they look now. The frontage and width requests are accurately calculated. However, the shape factor calculation appears to result from a misreading of the requirements of section 2.4.9 of the bylaw, and I don't think it's necessary. I recommend a favorable report forward to the ZBA. The last couple sheets show the details. They're combining those two remnant parcels for one flag lot. I think the shape factor in this zone can easily be obtained at the building site, which the bylaw provides for. The last is, yep, there's the aerial of the combined parcels. We recommend a favorable report.
I make a motion that we submit a favorable report to the zoning board of appeals regarding 359 and 355, Purchase Street.
I'll second.
We move in second, we send a favorable report to the zoning board.
I guess I just have to question, I mean, is this, I don't know, it's fine, we can discuss it afterwards. I mean, I almost look at it, I'm looking at names and stuff, and it's almost like, it looks like, you know, instead of doing this right the first time, we continue to keep going down, and it's like, oh, well, now you got to give me another one because I didn't do this right in the first place. So why don't we, why don't we, give me a lot that doesn't meet any of the requirements? When they own the property, I'm pretty sure if we look at the purchase, they could have done this a long time ago, but no, and now they come back to us looking for relief. And that isn't the reason why you get relief. So that's where I'm going. I mean, I know it's a fair complete anyway, so it doesn't really matter, but I just, I guess I got to put my name out there.
Are we reading, is this lot going to become non-conform?
No. They're combining the one you've outlined with the flag lot.
This one?
Yes. They're combining those two. So that it, so that it meets the area requirements now, but it doesn't have frontage and width because of the.
What's the passel behind Larry?
This one?
The big one. And is that mostly wetland? Is that Ivy Brook?
That's all wetlands.
Almost entirely wetlands.
Everything from the west, or for the east line right here.
That's the Brook.
Yeah. Everything east of that's wetlands. And there are two, two brooks running through there.
And that, this is, they cut, this, these, this property, this property, I think this one, but maybe I'm wrong. This property, this property, and this property were all one property.
Right, they've been fiddling around, shifting it back and forth, back and forth. Yeah, and this has been going on for a number of years.
Well, why is the frontage only 50 then, I guess, is my question?
On this one?
Yeah.
Because there was only, because they created a conforming lot here.
So that's got 50.
So they, so they.
This, this has the required.
Yep.
110, 110.
Excuse me, yes. Right, and then, and that's why this jog is here, is because the width is wider than the frontage, so that's why that had to be there.
Right.
So this was, this was what was left after you made this a conforming lot over here.
So effectively, they, they have one lot that they have legal rights to on there that could have been the whole thing and built, but they're trying to get two lots with, and they could have done this the right way a long time ago and never, never had to get into this, but they didn't want to, so, okay.
Well, and then there was some other land that they shifted from somebody else's ownership. But yeah, this has been going on for at least.
Yeah, I, I mean.
I think almost 10 years.
Yeah, this isn't a hardship. There's no hardship here. This is, this is a self-created hardship by, by them, and okay, now I'm going to go back to the town because the best I'm going to do is get two lots out of this. So let me, let me do that. And if you'd done it the right way, maybe you would have got more, maybe you would have got the same amount, but you wouldn't have been coming to us for, to get a variance, so that's, and like I said, I'm sure it's a fair complete, but I can't vote for them.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Here are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Who are in favor, one opposed?
All right.
Anything else to come before the board?
Your next meeting is next week, the joint meeting with the ad hoc committee. The consultants will be here.
Yeah.
You're exempt tomorrow morning.
Is that the only business on the agenda?
Uh, so far, yep. But it's a, it's a planning board meeting with, a joint meeting with them, so certainly welcome to show up.
Certainly. You're welcome, but not required. Yes.
Just so, like Kristen mentioned, the first, the initial meeting of the high school building committee was held last week for those members, just for everybody's.
Any progress?
All kinds of progress. Sorry.
Sorry, design.
Sorry, yes, exactly.
Moved in second to adjourn. Any further discussion? Here are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, unanimous of five. Good night.
Gentlemen, Elizabeth.
Right at nine, look at that.